The start of the meeting. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 487024051. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 5204329200. For directions, work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call District One is here. District Two?
Gomez is here.
And District Three?
Antonori is here.
All right, we have full board. Mr. Antonori is on Teams. And let's see, we have Ms. Gilman, Mr. Casey, and we've already introduced the Board of Supervisors. So, items for discussion, review of agenda items for the Board of Supervisors, Directors Meeting and Work Session for their week of May 4th, 2025. This does not require a vote.
No.
Okay, so would you like to just blast off and tell us about that?
I'll blast off. So, as is our custom, we have the Library District Meeting, and I'm going to remember to look at the back of the page all day today. So, we have the Library District Meeting, which just has consent items for minutes and budget. Blood Control District Meeting, again, just consent items for minutes and budgets. And the Jail District Meeting so far just has minutes and budget, and a potential action item that I'm wondering further direction on, on a comprehensive matter. And then, on the draft for the agenda for the regular meeting, that will follow is not much on the, on the action side. The consent is some traditional items that are, you know, the minutes and the budget amendment and transfers. There's recurring items for grants that are renewed every year. They're not new grants, but if anyone has questions about those items, I can try to find more information.
Okay, so this is for later in the day.
Yeah, that's, we'll do that one next.
Okay, first, I mean?
We can talk about it now. We'll go, go, we'll do this agenda first, and then, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So, no questions on the consent? I'm taking these? Okay, I'll give you a minute. Sweet. Mm-hmm. On the action items, Supervisor Gomez, you needed to, you request to use your community enhancement funds for two roll-off dumpsters. As we discussed in our Board of Supervisors Budget Meeting, this is, every supervisor has community enhancement funds, and typically they are used for this type of community cleanup project. It's very common. So, that item will be there for the Board to approve.
I guess it's, is it a recycle bin and a dumpster?
Sure. In this case, yes. There'd be one dumpster, and the other is meant for tires.
Okay, yeah, like computers and stuff like that, I guess, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And do we know how much that is in cost?
It's most likely going to be under $2,000, so we put $2,500 with a little bit of buffer room in there.
Okay, very good.
Because it comes down to the tonnage, you know, how much does everything weigh?
And then they have to go.
The cost for the dumpster, dumpsters themselves.
Okay. Very good.
And Development Services has a contract for approval, is the next item, for an affordable housing plan for Cochise County. And Susan Bronson is here to discuss that a little further with the Board.
Well, that would be a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
Good morning. Hillary, or do you just?
Whatever you want to do, and usually, the way it works, unless there's something really unusual, if you show up and talk to us today, you don't have to come back Tuesday. I mean, I'd generally be satisfied that unless you bring up something so controversial that everybody has to know more about this.
Okay, I don't think this is going to be a controversial item. This is a contract to award a housing consultant the work to prepare an affordable housing plan for Cochise County, and it is entirely grant-funded. There was no match required. So, we received a grant from Arizona Department of Housing for $194,450, and we put out bids for the work, and we received two bids from Elliott Pollock and then another consulting firm, Points Consulting. And Elliott Pollock was awarded based upon the highest number of points that they received in the evaluation. We've left a little bit of admin fee and a little bit of a contingency fee. So, the award is for $177,400, and the grant is for $194,450.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us, Ms. Bronson?
Just that the plan is to, to develop an affordable housing needs assessment, and also, all right, it's the needs assessment, also an affordability assessment, and implementation, and investment strategy. We specifically stated that we wanted implementation action items, so it wouldn't be a plan that would sit on the shelf. We could actually implement some of the strategies. So, at least 50% of the budget is going to implementation strategies, which will all be optional, but it will give us ideas in terms of how to make some of these action items attainable. And then they also, Douglas, in the outreach portion of the solicitation, asked for some additional data for Douglas. And so, the consultant has proposed to provide for Douglas, that would be the incorporated limits, a housing and economic development alignment report, and that would provide additional information on workforce housing, and also some city land that could be redeveloped for possible housing use, and, and look at their infrastructure needs and how that would relate to housing.
Ms. Gomez, did you have any?
Yeah, I do know that, you know, there's been some movement to annex maybe Purterville, you know, into Douglas, right, which might happen, you know, there seems to be some, well, maybe for the first time in a long time, the Purterville residents might be acceptable to that. So, and then with the port of entry coming in, they are going to take all that into consideration, you think?
We could negotiate that with them. They hadn't proposed to include anything beyond the city limits of Douglas. But they are also planning to give us some information on county-wide unincorporated areas of the county, which would include those areas that are just outside of the city limits, city limits as well.
Areas in which, can you kind of, just kind of tell me what the aim is, what the goal is for?
Right, so, some of the elements within the plan were required by the Arizona Department of Housing. If they were going to give these grants to local jurisdictions, then they stated you need to do a housing need assessment. And so, that is going to be obviously included in the plan. But we wanted to go beyond that because it's very necessary to know the data, the, the needs itself in order to solve the problem. But we really wanted to solve the problem, so... I'm sorry, I just forgot your question.
No, for instance, I went to the Bisbee City Council meeting maybe a month ago, and they had just finished up Housing Study Two, which kind of, so I'm just wondering if, say Bisbee, they did their housing need study, do, but because it's a city, we don't look at that? Even though it seems like there would be some, you know, some spillover? As far as, you know, if you're talking about inside the city limits versus maybe outside?
Right.
And how do they, how do they talk to each other between the Bisbee Housing Study and now the County Housing Studies? Is there some?
Right, and I'm glad you brought that up because they are excluding the city of Bisbee from this housing plan, and that's because the city of Bisbee also obtained a grant, and we were in communication with the city of Bisbee at the time we were both applying for these grants. And it was decided that, yes, they would prefer to do their own rather than to be included in the county plan. So, the, this plan will not include the city limits, the incorporated area of Bisbee per se. But again, in addition to the six incorporated areas that the plan is going to look at, it's also going to look at the county as a whole.
They just, you have where it's needed, and then how, the affordability of the housing. And so, I was just trying to think of what are the legs, or what are the goals within the study?
So, the goals were to, to look at the needs and then somewhat address, how do we solve the problem? So, a needs assessment, and then look at affordable housing itself. And is there a need specifically for workforce housing, affordable housing, lower income housing, moderate income housing? Yes, right. And then, again, an emphasis on, well, what do we do about it? We somewhat know intuitively, yes, nationwide, we have an affordable housing issue. Yes, we have an affordable housing issue here. We have to do the foundational work to, to look at the data that says, yes, in fact, you're correct. We do have that. But then we want to try to solve the problem. What do we do about it? And because they're very data-driven, and by nature of the requirements under ADOH's grant, you know, they have to look at the data. The data is available for incorporated areas. It's not as available for areas that are smaller population. It's primarily based upon census data. However, they are still going to, they'll focus on those six incorporated areas. But in addition, they're going to look at us more holistically as a county, and get at some of the needs within unincorporated areas. Or as you were mentioning, those areas that are very in close proximity to an incorporated area, but fall just outside of an incorporated area. We don't, we don't want to not address those needs. Obviously, as you're saying, it's more of a regional approach. Affordable housing doesn't stop at a boundary line. You know, it is a more regional problem. So, it is our first housing plan, so we're somewhat learning as we go as well. But our understanding from this firm, which we have great confidence with this firm, we're really excited to have them because they've done a lot of housing plans within the state. That's what we really liked about them. They're specific to the state, and they have very deep knowledge of economics. And they are incorporated some analysis of what is the economy like in the area? Because it's very relatable to, you know, affordable housing need. But anyway, we're very comfortable with this consultant, and because they're more of a specialist than we are, we'll somewhat lean on them for some, some guidance. But we will also do oversight and make sure that the county's desires are addressed.
And then I guess then we'll be able to use that in the comprehensive study too, right?
You know, I believe the comprehensive plan is, for the most part, written. We have Christine here in the audience, and she can speak to that much better than I can. But the timing of this will be too late. It would be too late to incorporate within the comprehensive plan. However, we can use the comprehensive plan to provide us with a lot of data, and the comprehensive plan information can be incorporated into the housing study.
That's good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you want to hear from Ms. McLaughlin about any issues?
No, I mean, Miss, can you add to that? I mean, how you would be able to use this, or they'd be able to use your data?
So, we've done a lot of data analysis for the comp plan during a previous work session. We showed you some of the drafts. It's not as thorough as what we're going to get from this study. That's going to be a really in-depth, like, six-month study, probably completed at the end of the year. What we'll do, though, within the comp plan is use the data we have currently, which we'll also give to Elliott Pollock. And then, just within the recommendations, state to, you know, support the recommendations of that in-depth study.
And I just can also help with the two areas. We already know that we really need some help, right?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Nice, thank you very much.
Mr. Antonori, did you have any comments about Agenda Item Number Eight?
Nope, nope.
Okay, I'm just going to use my chairman discretion here and back up to Item Number Three, Court Administration Sense. Ms. Shipley is here. Did, did you come to tell us a few things about Item Number Three? It says, "Fill the Gap Agreement." You may. And I guess you are not the expert on juvenile probation, which is Item Number Six.
Yeah, Ms. Rockrich is here to go over that item. But yeah, thank you. Just an overview of Fill the Gap funding. This is a state grant from the Arizona Administrative Office of the Courts, and this provides funding for .6 of a pre-sentence investigator officer. These pre-sentence officers, they conduct the interviews with defendants and victims and witnesses. Then they write a pre-sentence report, and this report is given to the judge before the sentencing, provides them with sufficient information about a crime and the defendant's involvement in it, so that the judges can decide the appropriate sentencing. Any other questions you guys might have on the grants?
Not me. How about you?
Nope.
Mr. Antonori, you're all good on Item Number Three? We backed up to the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Rockrich, did you want to share anything with us about Item Number Six, which is Family Counseling Fund Allocation?
Yes, good morning. And I recently changed my name to McNabb.
To?
McNabb.
McNabb, okay.
I guess it's congratulations.
Well, yes.
It's a clever way.
It did go one way, but it's still a congratulations, so. What we're requesting is for the Board to sign a Board Resolution so that we can accept family counseling money. This money we receive from the AOC, and it is based on an allocation from the legislature, and then it's appropriate, or it's allocated per juvenile population per county. So, we would be receiving $11,960. Now, this does require a county match of $2,990. That has already been submitted with the budget. This is something that we have recurring every year. It's usually for roughly the same amount of money. And this money is used for family counseling purposes by our juvenile departments, for the prevention of delinquency, and to strengthen family relationships of juvenile offenders. So, basically, how we use it is, we have a strengthening families program run by the juvenile officers, where they will have the whole family, not just the juvenile, in for special meetings and get-togethers. And then we also pay for counseling.
Who are the counselors? How are they selected?
Well, they have to have an AOC contract, so they have to be a contracted provider. And so, they separately would apply for that. And in order to use any treatment funding, we do have to use a provider that has an AOC contract.
Okay, and these providers, do they provide counseling in person?
If we have somebody local, yes. There is some virtual going on as well.
Okay, I much prefer in-person for obvious reasons. I don't have any further questions. Ms. Gomez?
Do you have problem in finding local counselors?
We do, often, especially there's not many resources here in Cochise County. Even for our out-of-home placement, we usually have to send them out to another county.
So, are you looking for somebody with, for instance, a master's degree in counseling psychology, sociology, or do you know?
Yeah, it would be any of that. They would have to, again, apply for a contract. Yeah.
Mr. Antonori, do you have any questions for Item Number Six?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts in addition to our knowledge and the public. So, we are going to go on to Item Number Nine, and I wonder, Mr. Casey, are you ready to tell us about Item Number Nine, Facilities?
Yeah, so, on Item Number Nine, requesting funds to be moved contingency into Facility Budget to replace the aging units, the heating, or the gas packs over in Building A, the Health Department building, to get that up to date.
What is the gas pack?
It's part of the HVAC unit.
Okay.
I do not have any discussion items for Number Ten, which is state and federal legislation. What about yourself, Ms. Gomez?
No, I guess this would be with his big attention, just saying we're having a move session. Oh, that's the next, oh, that, and the next one, so I don't have to say that. Okay. No, not at this moment. I do know that, that the mayor and State Council went to DC this past couple of days, and met with Siskimani and a couple other, I guess, Kelly and whoever else about the port of entry. So, that's a good thing. And then the mayor and I went and advocated for money for the Connector Road. I think it was maybe, it was two weeks ago. And Vincent saw that the Maricopa Mayor was down there. I mean, I guess she goes to every public hearing to advocate money for her 347, which is, I guess, a road they're growing, and they have a lot of accidents. So, we were kind of thinking then we probably should be at every hearing and to advocate for the money that I believe Mr. Sill is willing to reallocate from one project, from Wilcox, to get us the money, because right now we're still an illusionary project, which I always find amazing, it's an illusionary project, which is means it's a project that they like to have funds for. So, I like to make sure that we actually have real money in this, in this budget that says it's not, no longer illusionary, but it's a real thing. So, that's what we're trying to advocate to get.
I would appreciate it if you would elaborate on what you mean by illusionary and so on.
That's what I know, is that it's something they would like to fund, but haven't funded yet. So, it's illusionary. It's, it's, it's out there. It's like an illusion. Like, you know, you're out in the middle of the desert, and you put that car in the whole garage, and you wish it was there, but when you get there, it's not. Something else.
Is that how it is?
Yeah.
With, with, with what parts of the POE project does that apply to?
This is the road that connects the port to Maine. So, it's the main, you don't have a road. I don't know how you build a building without a road. So, this is really important. And I think if the road, if we could actually say there is money going to, it's allocated, because they say, yes, we're going to do it, then it gets pushed another year, and another year. Like, I was talking to somebody and from Purterville, and she says, yeah, I remember, this was in 1996. You know, so this has been, you know, like in New York City, there was an urban legend about crocodiles in the sewer system? This has now become our, you know, urban myth, this port of entry. Because it's been over 30, 40 years. So, if we can get money that is actually going to, people can say, yes, it's in the budget. It's there. I think that will make everyone push everything along, and people will realize it's real, especially in the community in Doug's.
Okay.
So, hopefully, that's what, that's what our goal is right now. Once we can get that, where it's actually, they'll put the money in there, then I think we're good to go.
Okay, and then, once that occurs on the United States side, we'll be waiting for that to occur also on the Mexican side.
Right, I think the mayor is doing a really good job. Last week, he, they cut up to 20 cities in Sonora that they became sister cities, for them to push on their side, for the government to start building a road. And, you know, in Mexico, they could do something overnight, you know, have all the things that we have to go through. They could put up a building like that and a road like that if they want to. So, with support among the Sonoran cities, and I think that's a real benefit. So, he's doing a really good job on the Mexican side. So, I'm really hopeful there too.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Antonori, would you like to make any additions to state and federal legislation, which is Item Number Ten today?
No, not today. Maybe, maybe Tuesday.
Okay, so you will be back Tuesday. Is that correct?
I'm going to try to, no, I won't be back Tuesday. I'll be, yeah, I'll try to Teams then. I'm going to try to Teams. The con will be yours, Mr. Crowe.
Okay, so, how much of, of the pre-meeting reading do we need to do to advance to the next meeting? Or shoot, shoot, and, okay.
Well, I mean, we, the last.
This is all one meeting?
It's all one meeting.
Okay, super.
Then the last item that we have for the week is the Gray Wolf Management Agenda. So, that's on Thursday, May 8th. We're having a work session with the Board, and Pat Dow, who is from Eastern Arizona Counties Association, they've been following the gray wolf, the Mexican wolf management issue since 1998 or something. And will be providing us information to the Board on the impacts, the various agencies that handle the matter, and coordination efforts to have rules changed, and so that there can be a alternative to how it's currently operating, where you can't, ranchers can't take any action to protect their cattle property. So, they're working on efforts to change that situation. So, this will bring the information to the Board, so the Board can decide how you want to proceed on any action.
Okay, and this is going to be at May 8th, at 10:00 AM for all those people interested in the gray wolf issue?
Mexican, yeah, Mexican gray wolf.
Have a little error there, which is.
Okay, okay.
And it's interesting, because I just talked to the Smith branch, and they've had 11 cattle been taken down by Mexican gray wolves.
Where's the Smith branch?
It's towards the east of Douglas. You know, that whole precinct 50 that's from Douglas to the Mexican border portal, went to two months ago. So, all those ranchers, the Princes, Glad, and all them had some real big issues. And, you know, it's going to be interesting, because there's only one guy that comes from all the way from Phoenix to identify whether or not the cattle has been taken down by a Mexican gray wolf. And if he doesn't get there in time, then decay, you know, decompose, you have the cattle, so quickly, and then they, they don't get recompensated for their loss. Which I guess it's about $2,000 a head, or something like that.
Sure.
Pretty expensive. So, 11 gone in two weeks, it's like $20,000, $25,000. So, it's going to be a really good meeting, a really good work session, I should say.
Mm-hmm, very informative.
Okay, Mr. Antonori, do you have any comments about our upcoming meeting on the Mexican gray wolf on May 8th at 10:00 AM?
No.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll be there. I'm going to do my best.
And then the second item on the agenda is discussion of proposed meetings, scheduling, and agenda for future meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
That's discussion possible, too, you could action regarding.
What is it? So, for this meeting, we always end with any agenda items or discussion that you want to have regarding the future meetings, but I think we're pretty.
Captain at the moment. I have a reminder, and then it is going to be build the animal shelters.
I haven't announced, I haven't announced the item yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Discussion and possible direction to staff on proposed meetings, scheduling, and agenda items for future meetings and work sessions. Madam Gomez, do you have any comments?
Yes, there's, now there's, I guess, the Friends fired the Tammy, or whatever, from Douglas, who was running that shelter. Oh, I don't know. And that just happened Friday. So, I've had people want to form a task force on the animal shelters, and it sounds like everything has kind of just, kind of gone in disarray again. So, I don't know if we'll have a work session, but I'll have to talk to you.
Yeah, we might need one. Okay, let me do some digging and find out what I can.
Yeah, I don't know. Nobody seems to know why she was fired by Friends Friday, Friday or Monday. So, I guess. And then we, we had an IGA with Friends, right?
And we, Douglas?
With Douglas.
With the city of Douglas.
So, they paid a portion, and we made a portion.
And they have asked for additional funding, so that's going to be a budget request as well.
So, what does that come under? When does that?
That came in after the sheriff's budget, so I'm meeting with the sheriff's office to discuss how we want to handle that. So, and I'll have more information for the Board.
So, animal control and the animal shelters, are they kind of two separate items?
No.
Are they kind of together?
They're together.
Okay.
Yeah, they depend on each other.
Okay, so I see that as being an issue. Okay.
Also, Madam Gomez?
Well, just because, you know, there's a lot of people who are very concerned about the animal shelters, both in Douglas and Wilcox. Douglas hasn't been a kill shelter for quite a while until recently, when I guess Tammy took over, and things were getting much better. People were very happy with her. And then, nobody knows why Friends. much better, people were very happy with her, and then nobody knows why friends fired her, and so there's been some complaints about Wilcox being a kill shelter also, I don't know if that's true, and then, and so we really only now, I mean, we have the Douglas and we have the Wilcox, but then there's the one in Siravista, right?
And we don't have an agreement with Siravista, but we do in Benson.
In Benson.
Benson, Wilcox, and Douglas are, we have IGAs with those entities.
And the big issue is, like, if somebody loses their dog, say, in Tunstall, they usually all have to go all the way to Douglas to be, to be able to get their dog, and sometimes they don't know it's there, so maybe it's communication issues, I'm not sure, but it seems to be a real concern among a lot of people, so, we have to figure out what we do later, and all the IGAs that we are in line with, and are they following policy, or, you know, it seems like everyone, do they have their own policies, or do they all have the same guidelines?
Our IGAs with them are very similar, but they're responsible for the operations of their shelter.
Okay.
So, is it, am I correct in assuming that the animal shelter IGAs that the county have are for funding for those facilities?
And space, for the sheriff's office to have a certain amount of space for their dogs, for the dogs that, and animals that they drop off.
Okay.
Not, not for their canine, but officers take over?
Okay, no, this is for animals, the animal control through the sheriff's office, because the sheriff's office has five animal control officers who've served the unincorporated areas of the county, so the IGAs are for this, primarily, the intent is so that the sheriff's office has a place to take their dog, that they have.
Okay.
And then we turn the operation.
Mr. Antonori, do you have any input on what Madam Gomez had to say about animal shelters and, and the county funding and IGAs, by any chance?
No, no, I, I don't.
Okay, then we'll just simply move right along, he's got something else to do. Okay, so, what would we like to talk about next, Ms. McLaughlin?
We're done.
Wow.
Hey.
Let's see, okay, so, let's see, next meeting is, is, is it May 8th?
When is the CCOM meeting? Although, our CCOM meeting is today at, budget work session for CCOM at 1 o'clock today, okay.
And that's, that's the last meeting?
For today. For today. For you.
I feel like, yeah, it's strange.
Okay, we are going to prepare to adjourn, our next meeting will be the budget work session for CCOM at 1 PM today, this meeting is adjourned.